Good evening and welcome to the April fifteenth, twenty twenty-five meeting of the Roseland Governing Body. Adequate notice meetings been provided in accordance with the Open Public Meeting Act. And at the date, time, and location of the meeting, we're including the annual meeting schedule, posted on the public bulletin board near Municipal Building and filed in also the Borough Clerk. For those attending tonight's meeting via Zoom, the agenda and any other relevant documents can be found on the Borough's website, attached to the meeting notice posted on the news and announcement section. During the meeting, announcements made prior to the two public comment periods. Anyone wishing to make a public comment via computer will be instructed to use the raise your hand icon. Anyone wishing to make a public comment via telephone will be instructed to dial star nine at the appropriate time. Anyone wishing to make a public comment via Zoom will be instructed to use the raise your hand icon. For those in attendance in person or remotely, please provide your name and address when selected. If you're eligible for Daniels Law, please just announce your name. Mr. Watkins, please call a roll.
Mayor Spango.
Present.
Mr. Barty.
Here.
Mr. Brant.
Here.
Mrs. Brody.
Here.
Mr. Schroder.
Here.
Mrs. Toley.
Here.
Mr. Trillo.
Here.
Please rise for a flag salute.
What do we do?
We apply to the Republic and to God, to this world, to each one.
Thank you. We're going to move the agenda around a little bit. Uh, we're going to do presentations right after our first round of public comment. So first on the agenda is public comment. Any member of the public wishing to be heard, come forward, state your name and address for the record. If you're with us via Zoom, use the raise your hand icon. If you're with us via phone, press star nine. Thank you, Ryan. All right, we have a lot of presentations tonight and swearing in of three new police officers and promotion of two sergeants. We're going to go in age order. We are going to start with the Roseland Black Team. I'm going to ask Patty, because she has the names, and I'm going to ask Councilman Barty to come with me because he has a special guest. Okay, so the Roseland Black was the first and second grade basketball champions. I'm going to have Councilman Barty hand them their trophies after we announce their names. Shay Dorosha.
Oh Shay.
Shay, come up, stand over here.
Oh Shay.
Zach Glazer.
Who's not here?
Leo Masler.
Oh Leo. He's so cute.
Matthew Tubman. Noah Tubman. Vivav Konatala. I hope I did good with that one. And this one's special for Chris, Julia Detroit.
Oh Julia.
They, I think they've lost one game through the entire winter season. They did a great job. They listened very well. This is our first year doing this, so it was very exciting and they brought enthusiasm every day.
First year and we won. All of you guys, just stay there. Councilman Barty, go behind Julia and then we'll do a picture. Yeah, well, they're going to catch it with the parents and everything. Go out this way.
Good job, guys.
The Liberty?
Go the road, chaps!
Bye, guys.
Congrats, guys.
Bye.
Congrats. Twins? God bless your parents. I had, I had. Take care, congrats.
You're doing the same thing for the Sparks. You're doing the same thing for the Sparks.
Mostly on Liberty.
Aw. That was sweet.
Who is?
That was so nice. That's what I was.
Of course, it's the last one.
They didn't want to leave the one little girl alone, so two other girls. Acts nice to say. Ah, the green and green cheese.
Just keep winning championships, what do you expect?
What's he calling Chino? Oh, there he is. Like I see their daughter.
All right, first we'll do the Liberty. We'll call each player up, they'll get their trophy, and then we'll have the head coach and assistant coach come up for comments. Uh, for the Liberty was the third and fourth grade championship basketball team, Sofia Burgos. Alexa Izzo. Alexa, stay up here. Juliana Lupinachi. Annie Mandell. Savannah Newman. Estelle Sebastian. And Ayesha Tahada. Yes, excuse me. Uh, can I have head coach Rich Lupinachi, who took a break from the snack shack to be here? And the perennial championship coach, Matthew Mandell.
Well, that's true. Uh, these girls, honestly, this season were amazing. Um, needed, me and Matt both, we needed a stronger medication for our blood pressure during a couple of the games, but we came out on top. You girls were awesome and I couldn't be prouder. Thank you, girls.
How many do you have? Do you have like, we have like four hundred of these?
Nice job, nice job.
Good job, girls.
Next up, we have the Celtics. We'll call the, uh, the players up one by one, and then the head coach and assistant coach. Head coach was Roger Frida, assistant coach was Michael Fabricator. We have Dylan Fabricator. Beham Akori. Chase. Chavda? No. Uh, Grayson Finley. William Frida, better known as the Dude. Paris Molando. Aaron T. Zuka Tabai and Leo Vignavetsky. Hope I got it right. If I didn't, beat me up. Uh, head coach Roger Frida and assistant coach Michael Fabricator. And you have the Celtics.
Yes. Oh, Chase. Um, when we started this season and we kind of let the boys kind of have a little fun and, uh, play a little bit, you could see the, uh, level of competitiveness they had. So, uh, I knew we had a good group, so, I know. I'm the loud coach. I scream a lot. But, you know what? Um, I think it helped these guys. It pushed them. We kept getting better as the season went on. Playoffs came around and they looked like a completely different team. And, uh, they played hard and, uh, it was nice to see where we ended up. There was, there was a lot of good competition this year. Especially in Roseland. You know, we like to keep the championships here. Um, but yeah, congratulations to these guys. They all played, played so well. Everybody, uh, improved as the season went on. There was even a couple of the guys on the team that now enjoy basketball so much that they are now moved on and they are now playing for other leagues outside of town because they enjoyed it so much. And, uh, I think I got to congratulate William on, uh, an amazing season where we lost count at about a hundred and forty points this season. That's, that's where we lost it, so. Amazing season. Uh, you guys should be really proud. You guys came a long way, so, you know, congrats, guys.
I hope the real Celtics don't do the same. No, I missed the hit. I still missed the hit.
Yeah, hand them to me already.
Here we go.
Now, the order again, it's ten, ten, ten years, the ten year younger is two different. Yeah, they, um, four, like, three, or something. Two graders, puddle. Older girls, young girls.
Right, right.
So you say young girls, so these girls are in the first year of their own kitchen. Then relief came in, gave up six. Slowly.
Yes, it is. It's like being in goal. It's lonely.
And then she just gave up, uh,
Who's next?
Didn't get him in.
Do you have another first place?
You gotta get the girls inside, right?
Do you have another first place?
Oh, they are? Oh. Perform, performant, performant to me.
I know. What are the gentlemen that snacks at?
Next, we have the fifth and sixth grade champions, uh, Roseland Sparks. The new tradition is to get sweatshirts instead of trophies. I blame my daughters. They started it a couple of years ago, but it's, every kid has too many sweatshirts now. My kid's closet fell apart. No joke. Uh, we're going to call the girls up by this, and hand them their sweatshirts and bring up head coach Rich Lupinachi again and Mandell again for another championship. Uh, and Coach Schroder. He won a couple of championships, I think, in the spring, or the fall, right, too? You guys keep count, like, is it?
Yeah.
Uh, first up, we have Gabrielle Lupinachi. Uh, Quinn Molando. No, whoops. Give it to her mom. Uh, Delilah Rasco. Oh, Rasco? Joyce Zhang. Maggie Mandell. Mia Schroder.
Do you know her, Brian?
Audrey Young. No. Uh, Jocelyn Kenery is the other one. Who else we got?
Oh, Joss.
Ryan Malone. And Gia Blasco. Know what your girls are wearing to school tomorrow. Um, I'm going to call up head coach Rich Lupinachi with assistant coaches Matt Mandell and Brian Schroder.
And I would like to call out that there, it's a common denominator here tonight. Me, me and Coach, just, I'm just kidding. Uh, to be honest, be honest with you, this team, uh, is probably one of the best experiences coaching I've ever had, uh, in my career. Bunch of amazing girls. Um, they were even making up their own plays at school the night before a game, executing it perfectly and it worked out most of the time. So I just want to say, coaching you girls has been amazing. Love you all, proud of you all. Congratulations.
Good for that.
That's it for the team, certainly.
Oh my gosh. That was it.
I would assume so.
Don't we have to do the, don't we have to do the resolutions first before we swear them in? Should we do that real quick or do it after? It's on, it's the swearing in. Four resolutions on top.
What's he, what's he doing? Yeah, okay.
Do you know what I mean?
Procedural purposes, like to move resolutions one forty-three dash twenty twenty-five to one forty-seven dash twenty-two, twenty twenty-five, appointments to the Police Department and two, uh, promotions to sergeant. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Paradi Trillo, all in favor?
Aye.
Post, hearing none. All right, we're going to bring them in one by one to their family call.
Sure.
These weren't here.
Oh, really?
Is, uh, Jeannie, is Gattira is in Carnival? Any sons of police? Because we've had those names before.
Marty's been here for what, twelve plus years, right?
More than twelve? And Carnival's been here. That's a promotion, never mind.
Yeah, they're promoted.
I'm looking at, I thought maybe it was their son or something. That's different.
Isn't, aren't they here, that Carnival's here like twelve years?
They've been here, yeah.
Marty's here longer. How long?
Like Carnival, yeah.
I knew they were all twelve plus years.
They play at the rec complex and we play soccer games?
Oh.
They did nice job with that little complex there. Where they got two baseball fields on there.
Are you cold? So tell the mayor. Thank you, thank you, Chris.
Well, you know what it was. There were so many people in here.
Yeah, it's like a small.
Yeah, I am. I'm just getting over bronchitis. I don't need to get sick again. Trying to go to hospital against that, it's crazy. I had, me, two weeks ago, I had a typhoid attack. It's, it's rough. No, he was there, here for twelve hours. We've got another doctor appointment tomorrow, another one Friday, it's, yeah. Still has a thing in his arm. It's, it's rough.
It's never retiring because that's what happens. It's pulling apart.
Oh, yeah, sure. Well, soccer field's wider than football. Yeah, so, and it's a, I remember having like the little kids play out on like, it's a big field. What the hell's going on here?
Building safety month, that's.
Terrible, terrible. Well, everyone out. Yeah, I was like, what's going on? These kids are gassed.
Oh, I got a good painter. I got a good painter. Oh, no, I have.
That's nice.
They spackle and everything.
Fireman's a great.
Wait, I said to my husband, because I want to paint the upstairs hallway. So my husband said, well, let's, we're having to paint the whole upstairs. Just painted these rooms during COVID. I go, well, I don't like that bedroom. Yeah, Frank, Frank painted my hall during COVID. I said, you're not doing nothing. Yeah, but he don't. He painted my son.
So you guys got your seats back anyway.
You're going to do that. Don't worry about the math. It's dangerous. We get Mike Trump by judgment. Right. That's the bench that could go back.
Even when you do play on a cold, real field, it's all turn.
They did get the announcer's booth set up though, so that's, we'll see how that goes. They got kids working it. Calling out the names and stuff like that, yeah? No, Thursday's up here.
I won't be there either. I'll be given hours, IV. Do it certain times, the morning and at night. The towers are painted. I want to have two hundred. Three years ago. I mean, why you touring for my new car?
Twenty-two.
It's a load block. I have one, I have one of those.
What's up?
I have one of those for cancer.
Going. What up?
Our finest.
We're going to start with, uh, soon to be Sergeant Carnival. Sergeant Carnival could come forward. Police Director Choffey. Who's holding the Bible? Come on, girls. I'm the father of two girls. And who's going to put the badge on? I state your name. Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of New Jersey and that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the governments established in the United States and in this state under the authority of the people. And I state your name do further solemnly swear that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties of sergeant of the Roseland Police Department according to the best of my ability and that I will not use my office to grant preferential treatment nor to seek personal gain, favor or advantage not available to the general public. So help me God. Congratulations. Yeah. Great halftime of salad, yeah. Good. Congratulations. Congratulations to the Carnival family. Next up, we have soon to be sergeant, Martin Gutierrez. Who's, who's holding the Bible? And who's going to put the badge on? Repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Martin Gutierrez.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of New Jersey. That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the governments established in the United States and in this state under the authority of the people. And I state your name do further solemnly swear that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties of sergeant of the Roseland Police Department according to the best of my ability. And that I will not use my office to grant preferential treatment nor to seek personal gain, favor or advantage not available to the general public. So help me God. Congratulations. Before we bring in the newly sworn in officers, I'd just like to congratulate both Marty and Glenn. And, um, you have a great responsibility, like the other ones that are up here before you. I think most of these, I think all of the supervisors that are up there have all been promoted since the last seven years. And, uh, you are going to set the example for the rest of the department. It's a very tough transition to go from being an officer to supervisor, especially in a small department where you were on a tour with someone, now you got to be the boss. But we have the full confidence in you that you will mold the future of the Police Department and keep the town going in the positive direction that it's going. And that's why you were chosen by your peers in this council. Uh, congratulations and best of luck to you. So, um, okay, you want to bring all three in? Ross Gulla and, it changes his name, Book of. Anybody else you want? You're good. Does everybody? I state your name. Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of New Jersey and that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the governments established in the United States and in this state under the authority of the people. And I state your name do further solemnly swear that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties of police officer in the Roseland Police Department according to the best of my ability and that I will not use my office to grant preferential treatment nor to seek personal gain, favor or advantage not available to the general public. So help me God. Congratulations. Need new suit after that. Congratulations. Who's holding the Bible? Or say state your name. Okay, repeat after me. I state your name. Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of New Jersey and that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the governments established in the United States and in this state under the authority of the people. And I state your name do further solemnly swear that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties of police officer in, in the borough of Roseland according to the best of my ability. And I will not use my office to grant preferential treatment nor to seek personal gain, favor or advantage not available to the general public. So help me God. Congratulations. Repeat after me. I state your name. Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of New Jersey that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the governments established in the United States and in this state under the authority of the people. And I state your name do further solemnly swear that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties of police officer in the borough of Roseland according to the best of my ability and that I will not use my office to grant preferential treatment nor to seek personal gain, favor or advantage not available to the general public. So help me God. Congratulations. He's coming. To the new officers and most importantly to them and their families, congratulations, good luck. I think I say this every time, but the family that's sitting with you up there is as important as the family that's out there waiting with you and congratulating you because when you have those tough days, you need the family in blue with you and your family for support. Your mental health outside of the police department is very important and that support cast that was here to see you be sworn in today is more important than you realize. So rely on them heavily. Thank the families for sharing them with me. Please continue to keep the borough safe as these other officers have. And remember, always go home safe to your families. Congratulations.
Someone's gotta be.
You see me? All right, goodnight. Goodnight. Goodnight.
Now you're not, are you?
No, but everybody's. I need to go to sleep. Are we gonna read this now?
Congratulations. Getting over a cold. Go to work? Shouldn't even last week.
Bad?
Comes out two days.
Oh, Sherry and, uh,
What was this?
A month ago, month and a half.
Just gonna give it a second to settle down. I'm sorry, Doc. I remember.
No, she's my middle. Getting up late, like two seconds.
To go to Morris.
But he's.
They'll be home from college in the next few weeks, well, I feel like by mid May. Being outside early.
And did you know that?
Yeah, I spoke to my buddy's dad's daughter at Donovan. And he was like, yeah, so we don't have any two weeks. I was like, wow.
He's replacing the battery.
He goes back and he's got like no time because by the time he doesn't go back until school.
Ready? All right, we're gonna continue with our agenda. We have three presentations. One of the presentations, I'm not gonna bring up first is mental health awareness, uh, but I'm gonna bring up, uh, a, a woman and group who were gonna come before us in December, but there was a conflict. And that's Sheree Castellano and Volampier. Uh, Sheree, if you can come forward, please. With your team. I'm gonna have Sheree talk a little bit about what Volampier is all about and her team that she has with her. But as we're gonna talk about mental health soon, um, Sheree has been a huge resource for the law enforcement community up until about six months. When did you retire? Three months ago. Um, she was heavily involved with Cop to Cop, which is a a, a support system that's in place for law enforcement officers to reach out anonymously because being one of them, cops don't think they need to ask for help because they gotta be big and tough, but they face mental issues just like everyone else does. She's been there for myself, my department, when we've lost people. I lost two people within two years of each other. My closest friend, one of my closest friends growing up, my closest friend at work, both to suicide. She's there to support law enforcement always. But I can't imagine the number of tragic suicides that she and her team have probably prevented without even knowing, just by being there to listen. So now she's taking this and expanding beyond law enforcement to everyone. So she had a wonderful gala, I think it was in, was it November? I couldn't be there that night. Um, I'm honored to go there and to be there to support her, just to give back a little bit of support that she's given to everyone in her life. And, um, I'm very proud to stand with Sheree tonight and I want to give her the opportunity to explain a little bit about what Volampier is about. Sheree?
Thank you so much, Mayor. I'm just gonna take a moment, first of all, to say thank you, Mayor, for your leadership in law enforcement in this town, in this borough. Um, I think that, you know, it's an honor to serve people who serve others. And that's what you embody to me and the council members. People who serve others really deserve to get extra support. So throughout my career as a clinician, I developed programs that sort of rescued rescuers and helped their mental health, um, and built their resilience. And three years ago, we had a house fire and we lost our home here in Roseland. And, um, the outpouring of love was overwhelming, both from the mayor and everyone in town and the fire department and the police. So we decided, after we received donations from over eight hundred people, almost a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars people donated to us, that we wanted to give back to our community. So we started Volampier, this nonprofit group, to offer free mental health services where people can get, give and grow peer support to deal with mental health challenges and stress. And we've done things like worked with the mayor and Roseland Day. We've been in the senior groups, we're in the schools. I'm so blessed to have three of our board members and supporters, Jen and Marcia and Patty here. So applause for them because every nonprofit is every nonprofit is based on their volunteers, but you know, we're, we have a small office and it's a little mission with a big heart. And we're just so honored and blessed to be recognized today and to be able to serve our community here that we love as a thank you and really reciprocity for the kindness we receive. So thank you so much for allowing us to be here and a big shout out to my husband, who makes everything happen in my life too. Yay.
It's budget season.
Jeannie needs two.
Who is, I think, good.
Thank you. Every little bit help. Thank you.
I really don't need two.
That's not what they're for, Jeannie.
That's the way I relieve my stress. That's how I relieve my stress. I'm Italian, I throw.
So our next, um, proclamation is actually natural progression. Councilman Schroeder reached out to me a couple of weeks ago, reminding us that May is Mental Health Awareness Month. Our, our next, uh, group that's gonna be that's gonna speak, um, is Lauren Tabai? Tybee? Lauren could come forward. We have a proclamation that May twenty twenty-five will be recognized as Mental Health Awareness Month in the Borough of Roseland. Borough Hall will be lit up green, I believe, for, for, um, for Mental Health Awareness Month. And I'm gonna like I said a few moments ago, it's something very near and dear and important to me in my life, in my profession, and I'm gonna turn it over to Lauren to speak a little bit about it. Lauren?
Hi, thanks for having me. Uh, first and foremost, I'm a mom to that awesome basketball champion winner. I'm a Roseland resident since, uh, two thousand and six. Board certified licensed professional counselor and just wanted to bring this to our attention. It would be a wonderful thing for Roseland to light up green. And, um, it's with the Mental Health Association of New Jersey and America. What else can I see about them? There's, uh, Delta Dental has been lit up, the New Jersey State House, Union Township Building. Raise awareness. Uh, I personally believe that mental health, our, our, all of our health is about connection and community. And if a building is lit up to honor that, it can make all of us feel connected and heard. So that's why I'm here. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have a proclamation for Lauren and we'll also be putting this in our newsletter to try to encourage homeowners to to, uh, light their house up green, even if it's just with a, a light bulb just for recognition and awareness is very, very important. So people understand that your mental health is as important as your physical health. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ryan, are you ready? The last few years, um, we haven't done one, but I thought it was fitting to do a state of the borough address. Um, it will be brief. It will be brief. Ryan, the man behind the curtain like the Wizard of Oz, is going to go through the, uh, slides that are, uh, behind, uh, governing body. Thank you for being here. Good evening, Borough Council, professionals and fellow residents. An underlying theme that seems to be permeating throughout our country and culture right now is three-word question, but something that really has deeper meaning when you really think of it. Who are we? We see so much around us, it seems conflicting, unclear and puzzling. Who are our friends, our enemies, what we stand for, what do we believe? Right now, the financial markets are acting the same way. They like to see stability and consistency when they have that, whether it's good news or bad. Business investors alike can make plans and chart a direction they want to go with some relative certainty. Here in Roseland, if there's one trait that we've been true to and steadfast on, that is consistency. Throughout our entire time up here, we focused on the same goals and principles, myself and the governing body, which might make our presentations of speeches a little bit boring, but I know the results are music to everyone's ears. We're keeping taxes stable, making improvements to our parks and recreation facilities, making necessary investments to keep our infrastructure sound and making sure we take care of our seniors and providing them with avenues to remain social and well. Our biggest accomplishment last year were the absolute varies, absolutely the various infrastructure projects throughout the borough. After months of work, Harrison Complex reopened last May and Harrison Field's new snack shack with landscaping, walking path and lighting improvements. It has been a joy to watch generations of Roselanders use the new facilities and watch kids get off of their devices. We've received grants and donations that have helped our police department and recreation department that keeps us safe. Special thanks to the Roseland Police Foundation and the boosters. We've also made special improvements that don't get headlines or accolades that are needed, such as replacing water lines, setting up dispatch services and getting our fire sirens working with the help of former police director and OEM coordinator and former captain John Mathais. Thank you, John. On the budget side, we have continually focused on ensuring that Roseland remains the most affordable place to live in Essex County and in this entire area. Last year, we had the lowest tax rate in all of Essex County, and there's a good chance we'll achieve that title again for twenty twenty-five. None of us want to see tax increases, but I think we all understand that many aspects are out of the borough's control and we simply must pay the bills that come due. We also do not want to neglect any department's critical investments or any opportunities to make a change that may cost us money in the short term, but lead to savings down the road. All to say, our finance committee and governing body do an amazing job in taking out the magnifying glass and scoping the areas we can cut, freeze or delay to save money, while also listing department heads and experts to see what areas we shouldn't be neglecting. When you put that all into perspective, hearing that Roseland's proposed budget, which should be passed tonight, only raises taxes by under one percent when other communities nearby are raising taxes two and a half, three, four, five, and even six percent in the budget cycle, it is astounding. I applaud the council for working through that budget, and it should also be noted, every single item that a department had asked for was included in this budget. Nothing was cut for their planning and for their, their individual capital improvements, all while keeping it under one percent. So for the average home in Roseland, for the additional cost of just an entree of food, if you went to a restaurant, we can continue to provide you all the services, events and benefits you have come to expect right here in Roseland. So what are our goals for twenty twenty-five? Our aim is to fulfill some promises and goals that have been made for a while. Most exciting is to take what longtime residents know as the all-purpose room and transform it into the Roseland Community Room. Our Public Works Department has already gotten to demoing it at no extra cost to us, and the plan is to make that our, this space place for our Roseland seniors to, to enjoy every day and that our entire community can use for their families and their family's enjoyment. We got a five hundred thousand dollar grant from the state of New Jersey to do this at no cost to the taxpayer. The Roseland Public Meeting Room has been used extensively for our Roseland Senior Society events, but with our growing number of seniors, the library parking lot has been filling up quickly, denying the library patrons a nearby, nearby place to park. By moving the senior society gatherings and other senior activities to this new space, these problems will be alleviated. And I'm going to go off script for a second and talk about mental health again because it's really ironic. It's the third time. Giving our seniors a place to go everywhere, every day and to communicate and to socialize is very important for their mental health. Tedesco Park renovation is in its final stage as the playground equipment is being installed this month, and the renovation of Bond Force is scheduled for twenty twenty-six. Recreation Director Mike Kalidi is retiring in a month and a half. And at one of our last meetings, Mike brought a list and I shared it with some of the council members. All the things that we set out to do in two thousand and nineteen will all be accomplished when Bond Force is renovated. And it's a testament once again to the council and the responsible budgeting to keep the budget so low while doing this. Our senior society was already mentioned in passing, but I want to talk more about our senior population. We'll have a growing number of seniors residing in Roseland, and so an active and lively senior society is going to be important to ensure they remain social, happy and ensure their interests are heard. In a recent article, Roseland was named a top charming New Jersey communities for retirees to move to and named our recreation offerings, low tax rate, senior society and closeness to various services as a reason to move here. Data shows as of right now, nearly a quarter of our residents are over sixty-five. And with these new seniors in town, they need a place to go where they can communicate and collaborate with their friends. This year, we've put a various, uh, we've put a focus on various topics, including increasing our speakers, our trips, our activities and getting our sponsors to help pay for some of the events and reviewing feedback from our seniors at all of our events to make sure we have what they want at our next event. Lastly, it has been great to see the progress on the front since becoming mayor, but the increase of Roseland pride is something that I'm very proud of. We have people who have given their lives to this borough and deserve to be recognized and celebrated. We have longtime residents who are now seniors who should be enjoying educational and social opportunities. We have new businesses who are moving into Roseland or starting in Roseland because of our ideal location, our wonderfully situated business areas and our community-centric atmosphere. Different nonprofit groups have stepped up to make Roseland a better place. In addition to helping those who need it the most, we've seen different organizations get involved to support our food pantry, our police foundation, our police department and our booster club. The Booster Club has taken the proceeds from the snack shack and gotten tables, heaters and made improvements to the Harrison Complex without needing to raise money from the taxpayer. These group and many others do so not for the credit, but because they love Roseland and they want to see it become a better place for themselves, their neighbors, their children and the future generations of Roseland. We may all come from different areas, backgrounds, religions and ethnicities, but Roseland is our shared home and it's something we can rally around and behind that have pride in our community. Pride in a community that has been growing and becoming more prevalent over the years, really taking off after the pandemic era and continuing through this day. Making improvements, keeping taxes low, being creative to solve problems and implementing solutions. That's what Roseland is, caring for our childrens, our seniors and our families. Making our community the gem of Essex County and being proud of calling this borough home. This is Roseland, this is who we are, and this is what we stand for, what we aim for and what we are doing. The mission and goals haven't changed, and if there's anything, we've doubled down on these goals and principles over the last several years and work to pour gasoline on this fire to keep the progress going. If you share these goals, want to be a team player and are willing to get your hands dirty, to see these goals get accomplished, reach out to the Roseland governing body and let's work together to make it an even better place. Thank you for giving me the privilege of being your mayor, for your support, your volunteerism, and thanking our employees for all you do to keep our borough on the right track. Thank you to the governing body for the shared vision and effort and joining me in the mission to keep Roseland affordable and make Roseland a great place to raise a family and more importantly, to stay when your family grows. May God continue to bless the borough of Roseland and all of its residents. Thank you very much.
Okay, first on the agenda. Ordinance dash twenty twenty-five. Mr. Watkins, please read the ordinance.
An ordinance amending chapter, excuse me, amending chapter three of the revised general ordinances of the Borough of Roseland entitled Police Regulations to add new section seventeen, use of motorized bicycles.
Is there a motion to introduce ordinance twelve dash twenty twenty-five?
So moved.
Second.
Parati, Barty, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing and seeing none.
Ordinance number twelve dash two thousand twenty-five will be posted on the borough's website. Notice of public hearing will be published in the progress. Public hearing will be held on Tuesday, May twentieth, two thousand twenty-five.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is ordinance thirteen dash twenty twenty-five. Mr. Watkins, please read the ordinance by title only.
An ordinance amending chapter seven entitled Traffic, Section seven dash twenty, entitled Stop Intersections.
Is there a motion to introduce ordinance thirteen dash twenty twenty-five?
So moved.
Second.
Baran Trillo, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing and seeing none.
Ordinance number thirteen dash two thousand twenty-five will be posted on the borough's website. Notice of public hearing will be published in the progress. Public hearing will be held on Tuesday, May twentieth, two thousand twenty-five.
Thank you, Mr. Watkins. Next is introduction of ordinance fourteen dash twenty twenty-five. Mr. Watkins, please read the ordinance by title only.
An ordinance amending chapter fourteen of the revised general ordinances of the Borough of Roseland entitled Parks and Recreation.
Is there a motion to introduce ordinance fourteen dash twenty twenty-five?
So moved.
Second.
Trillo, Barty, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing and seeing none.
Ordinance number fourteen dash two thousand twenty-five will be posted on the borough's website. Notice of public hearing will be published in the progress. The public hearing will be held on Tuesday, May twentieth, two thousand twenty-five.
Thank you, Ms. Watkins. Next is a public hearing on ordinance six dash twenty twenty-five. Mr. Watkins, please read the ordinance by title only.
An ordinance amending chapter two of the revised general ordinances of the Borough of Roseland entitled Administration to add section seven entitled Rules of Order and Procedure at Meetings of the Borough Council.
Is there a motion to open the public hearing on ordinance six dash twenty twenty-five?
So moved.
Second.
Barty Toley, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing and seeing none. Does anyone wish to be heard on ordinance six dash twenty twenty-five?
William Tedesco, Twenty Meter Court. I always have to say something on a public speaking thing. I, I read the whole thing. I'm not against it or anything, but I just want to make sure of a couple of things. You know, I understand, you know, I always believed this is a public session. And the most important thing, like you get up here, is tell the public what's going on and how to do it. And it's very important for you to hear from the public on what's going on. I mean, I believe in this, anybody who gets up here and disrupts a meeting or anything like this, have you have it in here, they should be reprimanded, thrown out. All the years I've been here, I've never seen anybody do this or anything like this. I think this, people are pretty respectful in this town so far. I don't know what's going to happen when you get all these buildings going on, but whatever. But, you know, I, like I said, I've been here for a long time, making a lot of comments and whatever, never disruptive and whatever. And like I said, I've seen it. And I think the most important part is the public. And so far, I have to say, Mr. Mayor, you have run it very good, and I hope you keep that going. You know? I mean, sometimes it takes a little bit more than five minutes, sometimes less, you know? And that's important to me, you know? So the, the corm that you've been using, I hope it stays there because I think you've done a good job on it. That's my important thing about this. So I understand the other rules and I think they're good. And, you know, I don't know if you ever had an ordinance before and it would ever, but I just hope that what you were doing before stays there. That's important to me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to be heard on ordinance six dash twenty twenty-five? Thank you, Ryan. If not, may I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Parati Trillo, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing and seeing none. Mr. Watkins, please read the ordinance by title only.
An ordinance amending chapter two of the revised general ordinances of the Borough of Roseland entitled Administration to add section seven entitled Rules of Order and Procedure at Meetings of the Borough Council.
We have a motion to adopt ordinance six dash twenty twenty-five.
So moved.
Second.
Barty Trillo. Roll call vote, please, Mr. Watkins.
Mr. Barty?
Yes.
Mr. Baran?
Yes.
Mrs. Parati?
Yes.
Mr. Schroder?
Yes.
Mrs. Toley?
Yes.
Mr. Trillo?
Yes.
Ordinance number six dash two thousand twenty-five will be advertised in the progress as a past ordinance, shall take effect as provided by law.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is ordinance seven dash twenty twenty-five. Mr. Watkins, please read the ordinance by title only.
An ordinance amending section fourteen dash four of the revised general ordinances of the Borough of Roseland entitled Use of Outdoor Facilities to add tier one nonprofit athletic groups and associated fees.
Is there a motion to open the public hearing on ordinance seven dash twenty twenty-five?
So moved. Second.
Toley Parati, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing and seeing none. Does anyone wish to be heard on ordinance seven dash twenty twenty-five? Thank you, Ryan. If not, may I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Trillo Schroder, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing and seeing none. Mr. Watkins, please read the ordinance by title only.
An ordinance amending section fourteen dash four of the revised general ordinances of the Borough of Roseland entitled Use of Outdoor Facilities to add tier one nonprofit athletic groups and associated fees.
Is there a motion to adopt ordinance seven dash twenty twenty-five?
So moved.
Second.
Parati Baran, roll call vote, please, Mr. Watkins.
Mr. Barty?
Yes.
Mr. Baran?
Yes.
Mrs. Parati?
Yes.
Mr. Schroder?
Yes.
Mrs. Toley?
Yes.
Mr. Trillo?
Yes.
Ordinance seven dash two thousand twenty-five will be advertised in the progress as a past ordinance, shall take effect as provided by law.
Thank you, Mr. Watkins. Next on the agenda is ordinance eight dash twenty twenty-five. Mr. Watkins, please read the ordinance by title only.
Calendar year two thousand twenty-five, ordinance to exceed the municipal budget appropriation limits and to establish a cap bank in accordance with NJSA forty-eight colon four dash forty-five point one four.
Is there a motion to open the public hearing on ordinance eight dash twenty twenty-five?
So moved.
Second.
Trillo Barty, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Does anyone wish to be heard on ordinance eight dash twenty twenty-five? Hearing and seeing none. We have a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Parati Schroder, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing and seeing none. Mr. Watkins, please read the ordinance by title only.
Calendar year two thousand twenty-five, ordinance to exceed the municipal budget appropriation limits and to establish a cap bank in accordance with NJSA forty-eight colon four dash forty-five point one four.
Is there a motion to adopt ordinance eight dash twenty twenty-five?
So moved.
Second.
Trillo Parati, roll call vote, please, Mr. Watkins.
Mr. Barty?
Yes.
Mr. Baran?
Yes.
Mrs. Parati?
Yes.
Mr. Schroder?
Yes.
Mrs. Toley?
Yes.
Mr. Trillo?
Yes.
Ordinance eight dash two thousand twenty-five will be advertised in the progress as a past ordinance and shall take effect as provided by law.
Thank you, Ms. Watkins. Next on the agenda is public hearing on ordinance nine dash twenty twenty-five. Mr. Watkins, please read the ordinance by title only.
An ordinance amending and supplementing chapter two of the revised general ordinances of the Borough of Roseland entitled Administration to amend section two dash fifty-one entitled Senior Transportation Committee.
Is there a motion to open the public hearing on ordinance nine dash twenty twenty-five?
So moved.
Second.
Parati Barty, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing and seeing none. Does anyone wish to be heard on ordinance nine dash twenty twenty-five? Excuse me. Seeing none, may I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Barty Parati, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing and seeing none. Mr. Watkins, please read the ordinance by title only.
An ordinance amending and supplementing chapter two of the revised general ordinances of the Borough of Roseland entitled Administration to amend section two dash fifty-one entitled Senior Transportation Committee.
Is there a motion to adopt ordinance nine dash twenty twenty-five?
So moved.
Second.
Parati Baran, roll call vote, please, Mr. Watkins.
Mr. Barty?
Yes.
Mr. Baran?
Yes.
Mrs. Parati?
Yes.
Mr. Schroder?
Yes.
Mrs. Toley?
Yes.
Mr. Trillo?
Yes.
Ordinance nine dash two thousand twenty-five will be advertised in the progress as a past ordinance, shall take effect as provided by law.
Thank you, Mr. Watkins. Next is a public hearing on ordinance ten dash twenty twenty-five. Mr. Watkins, please read the ordinance by title only.
Bond ordinance providing for the replacement of the water main on Cooper Avenue for the water utility in and by the Borough of Roseland in the County of Essex, New Jersey, appropriating seven hundred thousand dollars therefore and authorizing the issuance of seven hundred thousand dollars thousand dollars bonds or notes of the borough to finance the cost thereof.
Is there a motion to open the public hearing on ordinance ten dash twenty twenty-five?
So moved.
Second.
Barant, Toley, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Does anyone wish to be heard on ordinance ten dash twenty twenty-five? Hearing and seeing none. May we have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Trillo, Schroder, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing and seeing none. Mr. Watkins, please read the ordinance by title only.
Bond ordinance providing for the replacement of the water main on Cooper Avenue for the water utility in and by the borough of Roseland in the county of Essex, New Jersey, appropriating seven hundred thousand dollars therefore and authorizing the issuance of seven hundred thousand dollars bonds or notes of the borough to finance the cost thereof.
Is there a motion to adopt ordinance ten dash twenty twenty-five?
So moved.
Second.
Toley, Barant, roll call vote, please, Mr. Watkins.
Mr. Barty?
Yes.
Mr. Barant?
Yes.
Mrs. Parati?
Yes.
Mr. Schroder?
Yes.
Mrs. Toley?
Yes.
Mr. Trillo?
Yes.
Ordinance ten dash two thousand twenty-five will be advertised in the progress as a past ordinance, shall take effect twenty days after the first publication after final adoption as provided by law.
Thank you, Mr. Watkins. Next is a public hearing on ordinance eleven dash twenty twenty-five. Mr. Watkins, please read the ordinance by title only.
Bond ordinance providing for the acquisition of automatic license plate readers in and by the borough of Roseland in the county of Essex, New Jersey, appropriating fifty-six thousand dollars therefore and authorizing the issuance of fifty-three thousand, two hundred dollars bonds or notes of the borough to finance part of the cost thereof.
Is there a motion to open the public hearing for ordinance eleven dash twenty twenty-five?
So moved.
Second.
Parati, Toley, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing and seeing none. Does anyone wish to be heard on ordinance eleven dash twenty twenty-five? Hearing and seeing that, none. May we have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Barty, Toley, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Mr. Watkins, please read the ordinance by title only.
Bond ordinance providing for the acquisition of automated license plate readers in and by the borough of Roseland in the county of Essex, New Jersey, appropriating fifty-six thousand dollars therefore and authorizing the issuance of fifty-three thousand, two hundred dollars bonds or notes of the borough to finance part of the cost thereof.
Is there a motion to adopt ordinance eleven dash twenty twenty-five?
So moved.
Second.
Parati, Trillo, roll call vote, please, Mr. Watkins.
Mr. Barty?
Yes.
Mr. Barant?
Yes.
Mrs. Parati?
Yes.
Mr. Schroder?
Yes.
Mrs. Toley?
Yes.
Mr. Trillo?
Yes.
Ordinance number eleven dash two thousand twenty-five will be advertised in the progress as a past ordinance, shall take effect twenty days after the first publication after final adoption as provided by law.
Thank you, Mr. Watkins. Next on the agenda, we have resolution one forty-eight dash twenty twenty-five, the April eleventh bill list. Everyone receive the bill list for questions, concerns, and or recusals. If there are none, may we have a motion to approve the bill list?
So moved.
Second.
Toley, Schroder, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing and seeing none. Next, we have resolutions one through eleven on the agenda by resolution number one forty-nine dash twenty twenty-five through one fifty-nine dash twenty twenty-five. Like to move them in their entirety unless there's any questions, concerns, or recusals.
I just have a question on number ten, uh, resolution one fifty-eight dash twenty twenty-five. What's the intent of making it a non-condemnation?
Uh, the intent is that you can't, you exercise the power of eminence of me. And that's not really necessary here because the property owner has expressed an interest in a, doing a redevelopment project there.
Okay, thanks. That was a scary.
Any other questions, concerns? If there are none, do we have a motion to adopt these resolutions?
So moved. Second.
Trillo, Barant, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing and seeing none.
Mayor, I have a resolution regarding the reading of the budget.
Mr. Watkins, will you please read the resolution?
Resolution number one forty-six dash two thousand twenty-five, approval to read the two thousand twenty-five municipal budget by title only.
I offer the foregoing resolution and move its adoption.
I second the motion.
Mr. Watkins, please call the roll.
Mr. Barty?
Yes.
Mr. Barant?
Yes.
Mrs. Parati?
Yes.
Schroder?
Yes.
Mrs. Toley?
Yes.
Mr. Trillo?
Yes.
The resolution is adopted. We have a motion to open the public hearing on the budget.
I move that the budget hearing be opened.
I second the motion.
Mr. Watkins, please call the roll.
Mr. Barty?
Yes.
Mr. Barant?
Yes.
Mrs. Parati?
Yes.
Mr. Schroder?
Yes.
Mrs. Toley?
Yes.
Mr. Trillo?
Yes.
Mayor, this is the time fixed for the public hearing on the two thousand twenty-five municipal budget. But budget was approved by the governing body on March eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five, was advertised as required by law on March twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-five, together with notice of the hearing for this time.
Thank you, Mr. Watkins. Before the hearing starts, I'd like to outline the procedure. Each person desiring to be heard will rise and give his or her name and address before speaking. We'll recognize one speaker at a time in order of rising as nearly as we can determine. Address all questions to the chair. When, where necessary, they will be referred to individual members of the governing body or municipal officials. Questions must be confined solely to the municipal budget before us. Any other matters are not proper subject of the hearing and cannot be discussed or answered. We are now declaring, open the public hearing on the two thousand twenty-five municipal budget. Does anyone wish to be heard on the two thousand twenty-five municipal budget as amended? Seeing none, may we have a motion to close the hearing?
I second the motion. No?
Uh, Mayor, I move the hearing to be closed.
I second the motion.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Barty?
Yes.
Mr. Barant?
Yes.
Mrs. Parati?
Yes.
Mr. Schroder?
Yes.
Mrs. Toley?
Yes.
Mr. Trillo?
Yes.
Mayor, I have a resolution to present at this time to adopt the municipal budget for the year two thousand, twenty twenty-five.
Mr. Watkins, please read the resolution.
Resolution number one forty-seven dash two thousand twenty-five, adoption of the two thousand twenty-five municipal budget.
I move for its adoption.
We have a second.
I second the motion.
Mr. Watkins, please call the roll.
Mr. Barty?
Yes.
Mr. Barant?
Yes.
Mrs. Parati?
Yes.
Mr. Schroder?
Yes.
Mrs. Toley?
Yes.
Mr. Trillo?
Yes.
The resolution is adopted.
Mayor, I request that the clerk read section two, the adopting resolution for the budget.
Mr. Watkins, please read the resolution.
Being resolved by the council members of the borough of Roseland, county of Essex, that the budget here to, before set forth is hereby adopted, shall constitute an appropriation for the purposes stated of the sums therein set forth as appropriations and authorization of the amount of ten million, four hundred and seventy thousand, seven hundred and ninety-eight dollars and seventy-one cents for municipal purposes, four hundred and twenty thousand, six hundred and forty dollar, forty-nine dollars and ninety cents, open space, recreation, farmland, and historic preservation trust fund levy, seven hundred and sixteen thousand, four hundred and fifty-one dollars and eighty-one cents for the minimum library tax, and with general revenues including two million, nine hundred thousand dollars in surplus anticipated, three million, two hundred and thirty thousand, seven hundred and seventy-nine dollars and fifty-one cents of miscellaneous revenues anticipated, four hundred and twenty-one thousand, one hundred and seventeen dollars receipts from delinquent taxes, and ten million, four hundred and seventy thousand, seven hundred and ninety-eight dollars and seventy-one cents to be raised by taxation for municipal purposes, seven hundred and sixteen thousand, four hundred and fifty-one dollars and eighty-one cents to be raised by the minimum library tax for total revenues of seventeen million, seven hundred and thirty-nine thousand, one hundred and forty-seven dollars and three cents.
I offer the foregoing resolution and move for its adoption.
Second.
Mr. Watkins, please call the roll.
Mr. Barty?
Yes.
Mr. Barant?
Yes.
Mrs. Parati?
Yes.
Mr. Schroder?
Yes.
Mrs. Toley?
Yes.
Mr. Trillo?
Yes.
Thank you. The budget is adopted.
Mayor, I make a motion for the clerk to lay the budget out in full in the official minutes of the meeting.
I second that motion.
Mr. Watkins, please call the roll.
Mr. Barty?
Yes.
Mr. Barant?
Yes.
Mrs. Parati?
Yes.
Mr. Schroder?
Yes.
Mrs. Toley?
Yes.
Mr. Trillo?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone, and another responsible budget. Next, we have the consent agenda for, um, senior service, uh, seniors from West Essex. Uh, I think there's one, two, three, four, five, six of them. We're gonna do their senior service within the borough. We thanked them for that and welcome them soon. Uh, and a training conference. Do we have a motion for, to accept the consent agenda, pass the consent agenda, excuse me?
So moved. Second.
Toley, Parati, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Mayor's report, I would just like to thank everyone for a successful, uh, Easter event uh, this past week, it was a little cold and chilly. But also thank a couple of them here, the, 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 uh, the association presidents from the condominiums and townhouses donated baskets, the kids love them. Um, we thank you for that. Uh, the police did a great job distributing them.